The time is four thirty PM. The Pelican Rapids Council meeting of the twenty five, October twenty twenty two is called to order. I'd ask you in our council chambers this evening, before you leave, if you make sure you sign the roster before you leave, and also everyone here put their cell phones. And remember, tonight at five o'clock, there is a public hearing regarding the former senior citizens building, so we'll be breaking for that at five PM or around five PM. We'll call a member, Danielle.
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Monkraff.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster is not, and Mayor Brad Fraser.
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening, those in the council chamber, also those that are joining us via Zoom technology. Please remember, our city council meetings are on our Pelican Rapids YouTube channel and also shown on Channel fourteen on Wednesday evenings. A few announcements for the next three weeks, in fact. Tomorrow, October twenty six, ten to eleven AM, conversations with the mayor in Historic City Hall. Monday, October thirty first is Halloween. There will be trick-or-treating in the downtown area from three to five PM. And also Lake Regional Electric Cooperative is having their boo-bash from four to six PM. On Sunday, November sixth, remember to put your clocks back. Daylight savings time takes effect. Tuesday, November eighth, it's Election Day. Polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. Friday, eleventh of November is Veterans Day. City hall offices will be closed. And on Tuesday, November fifteenth, at four thirty PM, is our next city council meeting. Our city council meeting was moved back one week because of Election Day. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is Citizens' Comments. Anyone here for Citizens' Comments other than, if it isn't on the agenda? If you hear a speak regarding the senior citizens building, we'll take that at five PM during our public hearing. Anyone for Citizens' Comments? Okay, seeing none. Item number three is additions and deletions to the agenda. I have two deletions. Delete item number seven, Minnesota House of Representatives, Jeff Baccar. Delete item number seven. And delete item number ten, police personnel. Delete item number ten, police personnel. Are there any other deletions or additions?
I move to approve the agenda, deleting seven and ten.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the session, motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I will read. Item number four A is approval of council minutes from October eleventh, twenty twenty two. Item four B is approval accounts payable listing. And there was another accounts payable listing on your desk this evening for amount of twelve thousand one hundred dollars for police personnel issue. Item number four C is, one is the staff reports, utility report, which was in your packet, and four C two is liquor store report, which was in your packet. Four D is certified property taxes, property two zero southeast Fourth Avenue, administrative penalty amount of fifty dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the session, motion carried. Item number five is Community and Economic Development Association, or we call CEDA. And there was some information in your packet this evening. And also, we have a guest here this evening, Chris Gassner. And I'll let Don do the introductions here. Don?
Well, you kind of did, but in the past few council meetings, obviously, we've had some discussions around CEDA, Community and Economic Development Association. And so based on the conversations, we wanted to get somebody from CEDA to come up and just share with the city council and answer any questions the council might have. So today, we have Chris Gassner with us. And Chris, just step up to the podium and take her away.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much for letting me come up and see your beautiful community. I got up a little early so that I could take a little self-guided tour around and see the community a little bit, get to know the community of Pelican Rapids. Our president and CEO, Ron Ziegler, I think was who Don originated the conversation with. He wishes he could be here tonight, but instead, he got me. So I apologize for that on the front. My name is Chris Gassner. Like I mentioned, I'm the senior vice president of CEDA. I've been with the organization, I started about six months after Ron. So I've been with the organization about eighteen years. I've seen it go through a lot of changes. Tonight, as far as the presentation, from my standpoint, you have a bunch of information in your packets about us. I thought I could give you a little bit more historical background on where we have come from to this point, and then answer any questions that you guys might have either about who we are, or what we do, or any of those kinds of things. So our organization has been around for around thirty-six years. We were originally founded as a grant-writing organization, and we worked specifically in the southeastern corner of the state of Minnesota. At that time, and for the first twenty years, I think of our existence, we were known as the Southeastern Minnesota Development Corporation. And we worked specifically with a grant program called the Small Cities Development Block Grant Program. A lot of communities have access to it, I'm sure Pelican Rapids has in the past as well. In the early nineties, the state changed the parameters of that program and the administrative dollars that were kind of the lifeblood of our organization shrunk. And the staff was faced with the decision at that time, do we look for other ways to generate revenue and stay in existence as a private nonprofit? Or do we just disband and go and do our own thing? And to their credit, that conversation evolved into a discussion about the communities, the rural communities that we were doing this grant work in, and how the feeling of the staff at that time was those communities wanted to be more proactive when it came to their economic and community development needs. But they didn't have the staff capacity necessarily to do that. A lot of times, that work fell on a city administrator or a city clerk that was already wearing ten hats at the time. And the proactivity of that work tended to get shuffled to the bottom of all the other fires that those people had to put out. So they were operating on a more reactive model, but wanted to be more proactive. The other side of that was they didn't have the budget capacity probably just go out and hire a full-time economic development staff person. So from that discussion was born what we call today our community support program. And those are our contracts with cities and counties to do their community economic development work. And we do it on a basis in some communities of a project-by-project basis, where they have a project come in that they need some help with, they call us up, we help them with the project, and then our relationship goes dormant again until they have the next project. All the way up to we have some contracts that are full-time or even more than full-time if we have more than one person in that community. So, and just about everything in between. Our contracts are about two pages long. I would say if there weren't attorneys, they're probably a paragraph. But they also, you know, protect us a lot. There's a bunch of language in there that I probably don't understand, but it gets to be about two pages. We keep them as flexible as we possibly can, because we work with now in the neighborhood, well over fifty different communities have, we have a relationship with that we do some work in. Each one of those fifty communities, what they want for themselves is a little bit different, what they want from us is a little bit different. And that's because what they have is community assets or amenities or things that they have available to market or that they want to capitalize on, focus on, are different. And so we want to be able to remain as flexible as we can to meet the needs of those communities that contract with us, and also the counties that contract with us as well. Like I mentioned, about fifteen years ago, maybe sixteen years ago, we went through a name change, changed from Southeastern Minnesota Development Corporation to CEDA, because we realized the work that we were doing, or the communities that we were doing it in, wasn't unique geographically to southeastern Minnesota. It is unique to do this work in rural communities. How we do the work in rural communities, how rural communities do this work, whether it's with CEDA or not with CEDA, is different than how Minneapolis does it, or how Rochester does it, or how even Duluth does it, or St. Paul. So rural communities are our specialty. Our mission is to affect positive change in rural communities. We're governed by an board of directors that's made up of community leaders, business leaders, utility companies, bankers, all folks, stakeholders, in seeing rural communities grow and become, you know, grow, go after the things that they want for themselves. So they keep it really flexible as far as our mission. However, we feel we can affect positive change in rural communities and help them go after the things that they want, they give us the flexibility to be able to do that. Like I mentioned, I've been with the organization for about eighteen years. When I started, around the first staff meeting table that I went to, there were eight of us on the team. Today, there are forty-two of us on the team. So I've seen the organization go through a ton of growth over my time there. Geographically, like I mentioned, when I started, we worked with probably fifteen, twenty fifteen and twenty different communities, all in southeastern Minnesota. The moment we made this name change, we started moving further west, further north in the state of Minnesota than we ever had. We signed a contract in Iowa. We've worked in Wisconsin, Illinois, Florida, all over the place. Basically, wherever there's a rural community that says, hey, we could use some help with either this project or going after some of these things, we're going to try and figure out a way if we can help them. We have built out, like I said, with that staff growth, we've created enough critical maps to build out some departments that specialize in certain things. We have a government relations department. As a private nonprofit, we do not lobby, so it's not a lobbying department. But we also noticed, once we started working in other states, how the states interacted with the rural communities in those other areas was different than how we saw that happening in Minnesota. Like I mentioned, we have a contract in Iowa, and in the county that we work in in Iowa, they opened a new large-scale meat processing plant. The governor showed up for the ribbon cutting of that plant. We've opened a ton of businesses like that in Minnesota. Not only have not had the governor show up, but we haven't even, we've struggled to get a member of D to show up, you know, or something like that. So we knew that there's a line of communication that we wanted to make sure was wider open for our communities to be able to celebrate the stuff that they have going on. So we have our government relations department basically just to do that, to meet with the representatives in the areas that we meet, or the areas that we cover, and just tell them about some of the things that our communities have going on, or some of the things that our communities are struggling with, so that what is happening in St. Paul aligns better with how our communities can interact with, whether it's a program or some other function of state government that's going to have an effect on that. We also have a grant writing department. Like I mentioned, that's where we were born. And as rural community, you know, grant dollars are a great way for us to get things done. And so I don't see a time in our existence that we won't have grant writing be a part of what we do. But we also know, based on working in fifty communities, we couldn't have just one person that was responsible for all the grants in all of those communities. So we've built out that department a little bit and built some capacity there to work with our staff that are kind of boots on the ground in the communities that we work on, so that the grants that come through CEDA or through one of our team members can all be risen to the same level of competitiveness to go after those dollars. Government relations, grant writing, we have a marketing department that helps create marketing materials that, you know, sometimes our communities are looking for and whatnot. So we have some areas of specialty within our organization. Like I mentioned, there's forty-two of us on staff. If you put the resumes of all forty-two of us up on the wall, and you guys walked around and looked at those resumes, you'd be like, these people all work for the same organization, because we all come from very different backgrounds, very different educational backgrounds, very different work histories. A couple of threads that run through our whole team. One is we are all very passionate about the mission of doing cool things in rural communities. So you'll see that. But we have people that have come to us from the arts. We have people that have come to us from the government sector. We have people that have come to us from the education sector, from the banking sector, from compliance. I'm the sales and marketing guy originally. So, you know, as you look at our education backgrounds, we have English majors, we have theology majors, we have business majors. Ultimately, I think that kind of diversity background gives us a wide perspective for our communities to benefit from. We, our model is based on having boots on the ground in our communities that we represent. So if we were to develop a relationship with Pelican Rapids, it would be based on a staff person of ours being in this community, going after the things that you guys help us decide that you want to go after. So it's not based on a model completely of us in our office in Chatfield trying to help you guys in Pelican Rapids. We feel if we're not present in those communities, it's hard for us to have a thumb on the pulse of what we're trying to accomplish. Because of that, that depth or width of perspective, however you want to look at it, is, I think, one of the biggest values that we have to offer our communities. If there is, if there's an opportunity in front of our, one of our communities, our staff can reach out to the rest of our team and say, hey, guys, I had just someone walk through my door, I've never experienced anything like this before, has anybody seen an opportunity like this? And if so, where should I start? What should I avoid? Whatever the questions might be. And we have not forty-two people that all look at it from the exact same lens. We have forty-two people that are looking at it from forty-two different lenses to kind of give it a breadth of perspective that I think is beneficial to our communities. Ultimately, we get compared to most often like a regional development corporation. And RDCs do great work in their regions, but their model tends to be a little bit different than ours in that Region Nine is one that we work with a lot in the Mankato area. Their offices are in Mankato. And they help the rural communities around Mankato, but they do it in their offices in Mankato. That's great. Our community's saying we want to be a little more proactive, we want somebody here, so that when we say, gosh, we're running into a little parking issue downtown, we can see it firsthand and can figure out a solution with them in the space that it's happening. So ultimately, I haven't really found anybody else that does what we do in the way that we do it. We, I see some people that's, you know, down a little here or there, but this is, this is our whole mission. So we, as a private nonprofit, our revenue or our funding is based on our contracts with our cities and counties. Like I mentioned, we also do some grant writing, so there's administrative dollars that make up a small portion of our budget each year. And then also, we have some donor partners. But we are not funded by the state of Minnesota. We are not funded by one major donor partner that we're beholden to. And again, that allows us to stay flexible to go after the things that our communities say they want to go after. So that's kind of how we're structured and where we've come from. I don't know, Don, as you look at things, if there's anything else you want me to touch on, otherwise we can open it up to questions and...
Yeah, I think probably opening up to questions is on the information that you provided that we put in the packets is a good place to start. With, with the selection of people on your staff, do you try to select a person that lives close to proximity?
Yes, absolutely. You know, I think a lot of our staff, especially with our communities, you know, the contracts vary. It might be a day a week in one community, and another day a week in a different community. So there is going to be some commuting involved, but we try and hire somebody within proximity that that commute makes good sense, that hopefully that's going to create a longevity for that person in that position and not set them up to be like, it's fine for a little while, but after six months, I don't want to drive that far anymore. So yes, we would.
So would you, would you need an office or some kind of facility in town?
We, we provide our staff with technology, so we're pretty mobile. Basically, our needs would be a table and a seat and Wi-Fi access so that we can connect our laptop to the internet. But we work in, we have, some of our communities have offices, those are great. I work in, the community that I still work in is the city of St. Charles. I sit in their council chambers on the days that I'm in their community. Our, some of our communities, their, their city halls are so small that they didn't have any space for us in there. We've worked in libraries, we've worked in bank basements, we're pretty mobile. So yeah, just, you know, a chair and a table and Wi-Fi access is about all we do. Printing some documents from time to time, you know, access to those kind of services, ways to hook up on that stuff is great, but not a formal office.
When you are in the community, do you let the public know you're there on a certain day, so if someone from the public can come in and speak to you?
Yes, absolutely. We try and have a reasonably stable schedule so that the community can plan around the days that our staff are going to be there. We also try and be as visible as we possibly can. So what we tell our team is that there's really not a day that you don't have anything to do. There might be days that are busier than others. On those days, that maybe your phone's not ringing off the hook, that's a great day to kind of walk up and down Main Street, introduce yourself to the business owners, drop off a business card, so that they become, they start to realize that you're a resource for them. You know, it, in a lot of the communities that I've been a part of, the new relationships with CEDA, that I think is kind of cool, is when we, our staff person walks into a business in a community that we haven't worked in before, and we're like, hey, you know, I'm Chris, I'm with CEDA, we work with the city of blank, and just wanted to introduce myself, see how things were going. A lot of times, we've found that the relationship between city hall and the business community, there's a breakdown in communication that's happened somewhere along the way. And a lot of times, that interaction is in terms of a code violation or, you know, something along those lines. And they haven't had somebody that's just stopped in and said, we just want to see how things are going. And so they're like, you're from where? And you want to talk about what? And so it takes a little while, but ultimately, the cool part of that is that I go back to my office, and all of a sudden, I get a phone call either that day or the next day. And I say, you know, we've been thinking about something, we didn't really know how to bring it up or whatever. And they'll call and reach out because they, they realize I'm a resource. Sometimes, it's not me that is going to be able to help them, but most likely, I can direct them to the other city department that might be able to help them or whatever. And also, it just creates a much better line of communication to start to, to see things happen. But yes, our goal is to be as visible as we possibly can to go after the things that, that you as council, your economic development board, and city staff help go through a work planning process with us, where you give us the priorities for the city of Pelican Rapids. We develop an action plan around those priorities, present it back to you guys as the stakeholders that I just mentioned, and then you approve it. Say, yep, those were the priorities we gave you, those extra steps make sense, and go for it. If there's something on there like, eh, I don't think we want you to work on that, we want you to work on that, we want to figure that out on the front end. Like I mentioned, our contracts are made, or they're done as yearly contracts. So every year, we go through a renewal process. At the end of the year, when I'm standing in front of you, or somebody's standing in front of you, and we're presenting the work that we done, we don't want you to look at us like, that's not what we wanted you to work on at all, right? Because that's going to be a tough conversation to have. So on the front end, we try and do that light work so that we're working on exactly what the stakeholders of the community want us to be working on.
Any other questions from the council? Do you have any projects in this area going on?
Let's see. We work with the city of Fraser East, and we work with the city of Grand Rapids. And I'm from southern Minnesota, so the first time I started working in Attaskey County or came up to visit our staff in Attaskey County, I said, oh, why don't you get a little bit north of the city? You guys got some big spaces between places up here. So, so when you say in this area, that's the furthest north, but I'm not sure if that's considered in this area or not in this area.
Fraser East, of course.
Okay, good. I was recognizing some places that I was like, I think I've been here before on the highway up, so.
Don?
I got a question. You, you mentioned putting together that economic development plan in the, in the different cities that you've worked in. When you go to put that plan together, is it CEDA working with, with the city council and city staff, or is it CEDA working with city council, city staff, maybe representatives from an EDC, maybe some business owners that want to be a part of the discussion? Is that the makeup of the group that puts together the economic development plan for the community?
Yeah, what I would say is it is a little bit different in each community that we go through that process in, but ultimately, the community helps us identify who they want around the table and to be a part of that discussion. The, the way that I see it typically happen is like I described it, is from the stakeholder perspective, giving us priorities. Childcare, business development, Main Street redevelopment are some of the ones that we see a lot. And so those are kind of big ten-thousand-foot and ultimately ongoing, right? There's not a silver bullet that somebody has that's going to cure the childcare shortage, right? So, so these big ten-thousand-foot priorities, we take and break down into actionable steps because we know we have a one-year contract. So here's the things that we think are the action steps that we can do in the next twelve months for each of those priorities that you've given us. And then that becomes kind of our marching orders, once that's approved again by the group of stakeholders that, that you mentioned. So at the end of that twelve months, we're back in front of you, here was the, here's the priorities, here were the action steps that we said we were going to take in this twelve months, here were the results of those action steps, and here's what we see going forward for the next twelve months. Does that still make sense for, again, what that stakeholder group wanted to accomplish? And it also, again, this work is, it's amazing, and I love it, but it is not always the easiest to quantify. When I started, I always tell people, we were kind of on the tail end of an era in economic development that I called like smokestack chasing. Basically, the mission was get the, talk to Polaris, find out, you know, if you can get the next Polaris plant in the industrial park, create a hundred jobs, god, well done. And that was really all that we wanted to talk about around economic development tables. I think over the last eighteen years, I've seen that evolve so much because when we talk to Polaris, Polaris's first question about any community that they're considering, shouldn't put Polaris on the spot, any company's first question about the communities that they're thinking about is, where's my workforce going to come from? And if we don't have a community built up around that question that people want to live in, they know that they're going to struggle to find that workforce. People will commute, but they also know there's a correlation between the distance that people have to drive to that job and how long they stay in that job. So the closer that they can get them to move to this location, and hopefully, it's in the community that the plant is in, the longer they have a chance to keep that person around. So all of a sudden, that, that quality of life conversation started coming to economic development tables, and we realized it's kind of a more holistic approach to this, especially for rural communities. If we're going to attract those industrial partners that we want in our industrial parks, we also have to have a community that people want to build houses in, we have to have a community that families want to move to. So that means we have to talk about things like dog parks and bike trails and redoing the swimming pool and, you know, all of these other things to make a kind of more holistic approach to this picture so that when we sit down with whoever that next big partner is, we can say, yeah, here's, we think we can attract your workforce here because we have this great community with all of these amenities.
Wouldn't the lion's share of that economic development plan be done already through the comprehensive plan that we just did?
The comprehensive plan basically might be one, as I see it, one resource that the CEDA person would become familiar with, to get an idea of what it is that the city wants to work on. So that's the overall, the thirty-thousand-foot picture of Pelican Rapids. And then, and then just from the comp plan, working with maybe the planning commission and the council and staff and whoever else is involved in the conversations, that's what's used to kind of lay out, as I see it, that economic development plan for twenty twenty-three to start with.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, I think that's a great answer. Ultimately, you know, comp plans tend to look twenty, ten years and twenty years out. And the plans that I think we're talking about are in between that, or to head towards that ten-year of what the city, the community of Pelican Rapids has said it wants to look like in ten years, based on this comprehensive plan, here's the action steps that we can take next year, and then in twenty twenty-four, and then in twenty twenty-five, so that we get to that point in ten years that, that comp plan drew the picture up when you guys went through that process.
Chris, in the packet, there's an example of a contract for professional service. Who do you work with to draw up the language for this contract?
Our company attorney has helped us with that language. We send it to staff, and so you guys can have your attorneys review it. There's usually a few changes that, you know, come back to us, and so it's just finalizing it between the two attorneys ultimately.
Okay. I have a question regarding the development of the... I have a question regarding the development of the economic development plan for the city. That first one being we're just starting, hopefully starting this relationship or thinking about it. Of course, part of what Pelican, or what intrigued me about the whole process is setting down and coming up with that 2023 economic development plan. We do that now, getting set for 2023? Do we wait until January 1st of 2023 and then get you on board? Because part of, you talk about Frazee, for instance, the way Frazee uses you is you're there one day a week and then maybe some work off-site, you know, down over in Moorhead. Well, at some point, we got to get to the point where we realize from the plan how much we need you here. Five days a week would be great, but you know, we need to get to that plan so we know, do we want you one day a week? Do we need you two days a week? That type of thing. So where does that start? Do we start the planning in January 1st, or do we do it before that?
Right. Oh, I wish there was a perfect answer to that, Don. You know, I will say this, whatever plan we draw, something's going to happen in 2023 that those things are going to get shifted around anyway. I think of our staff going through this process in 2019, planning what 2020 was going to look like for us and the projects we were going to work on. And we get to March, oh, hey, this is new, global pandemic, well, this will be fun. So, you know, we had a whole, our whole, like, you might as well just blown up our work plan for 2020. So ultimately, you know, get started on some of that planning or some of the legwork and identifying the priorities that it sounds like recently you guys have gone through, relatively recently, have gone through a comprehensive planning process. So I think you have had some of those discussions and gotten some ideas where others, other communities maybe haven't gone through that process for 10 years or so. The one thing that I forgot to mention, and if Ron was here, this is what he leads with, which as a staff person that works in the community, I always think it's hard to lead with what we're really easy to get rid of. But our contracts are one year long, but in each one of them, we have a 30-day out clause. And what that means isn't that when we're there 30 days, you can make a decision whether you like it or not or not. That means at any point in our, any contract, in any year contract, if you're not happy with the service that you're getting from SEDO, you're not getting the return that you're looking for, it's a call to Ron and 30 days, we're done, and you guys are done paying. So it's not a five-year levy commitment, it's not anything like that. So we have to stay constantly accountable, which is why we rely so heavily on that action plan to make sure that we're hitting the mark with what you guys want us to work on. Because we don't want to get that phone call, you guys are, you know, we haven't seen, you know, Chris is working way over here in left field, we wanted him in right field, and so we're not getting the return that we want. So ultimately, with that planning process, if we started at a day a week or two days a week, and all of a sudden, through this process, we identify this big thing that's going to take a bunch of time, we can make an adjustment in the moment. We don't have to wait till the end of the year. So we're either easy to get rid of if you don't feel like you're getting the return on our organization that you're making. But we're also easy to make an adjustment if you feel like we really, we love what's happening and we want more of it. We can make that adjustment as quickly.
So in that initial, one of the documents, the mayor had referenced that draft contract you had with another city. Well, in that thing, there was kind of a, we will work on this, 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 this as part of the contract. So it almost seems like just to get SEDO on board or get some contract in place, we kind of have to have an idea of what things we'd like you to start looking at and working on.
Right.
Yep.
So in saying that, your clientele make payments to you on a monthly basis?
Uh, actually, some of them are monthly, some of them are quarterly. Some folks say we want to pay twice a year. We have ultimate flexibility when it comes to that, too.
Mayor, I have a question. Chris, could we request you to help us? Would that be a problem?
I will say that that commute will be a while. It took me about four and a half hours to get over.
Well, you could stay a week.
I will say also that you will have me to be able to help you because our staff will be able to lead that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So looks we have a lot more homework to do as far as what we, if, what we'd want them to work on.
So where do we start?
Where do we start?
We've got a draft document.
Yep. I would say a couple of things. One, if you wanted to have some conversations around a prioritization or a list of priorities for a potential staff person to work on, and you wanted to give me that information, and again, in draft, because things can change. But if you want to give me some draft language of, hey, we identified these four or five things as our big priorities for Pelican Rapids, I can start to draft what, some action steps that I think makes sense under each of those things, and figure out if somebody was in community and they were doing these action steps, it's going to take them eight hours a week, 16 hours a week in order to get through that. And that'll give us a place to start. And then we can, again, make an adjustment if we started 16 hours a week and there's not enough work there for our person, we can always back it off to eight and vice versa. If we start at eight and we, like, our person's like, oh my gosh, there's at least twice this amount of work weekly. We could talk about bumping it up if we want to do that.
One of the things that Dan O's talking to Ron about, just the idea of the SEDO person that would be basically assigned to Pelican Rapids, would be our SEDO person. You know, it's going to take some time for them to, through reading comp plan, just being about, out and about in the community, talking to the businesses, everything else, to learn as much as they can to Pelican, about Pelican. And I think from that would come from, would come some suggestions from our representative saying, hey, you know, this is what I'm hearing, things that we might not even thought of. Here's what I'm hearing that I think could be added to that list.
Absolutely.
And that plan is something I see would be ever-changing in a sense.
Absolutely. And one of the best parts of this for our communities, I think, is, you know, I think default for a lot of communities, I wish we had somebody from our community that was doing this work, which is great. But I'll tell you, having somebody from outside of your community as an objective set of eyes come in and see the things that you guys drive past every single day with a little bit different lens and say, you know, I think there's some things that can be done here. A lot of our communities are like, I ain't even noticed that, or think of it. Because it just kind of, and that's just human nature, right? Like stuff just fades into the peripheral, and we lose sight of it. We take it for granted, let's say. And all of a sudden, a different set of eyes from outside the community comes in and goes, this is so cool. This is this thing. We should use this thing. We can market to this thing for some of the things that you guys are talking about wanting. So, you know, part of this process, we kind of call it a first impressions report. But like I said, I got here an hour and a half early and just kind of drove around the community. I was getting excited about a lot of things. I mean, you guys have a beautiful community. I see a ton of potential here for things that I have worked on in the past and our team has worked on in the past. I think one of the things that Ron had sent is a link to our annual report that just has a few bulleted items from each of our communities that we work in, just for examples of kind of how we see the world or things that we work on. But yes, I think the more interaction that a staff person has with your business community, with your counselors, with your economic development group, there's new stuff that's going to be coming up constantly. And that energy, once you start hitting some of those wins, is infectious. And all of a sudden, the community starts to see, hey, these cool things are happening. How are they happening? How do we get in touch with it? And St. Charles, the tall building guy that's walking around Main Street every once in a while, right? So I think you're right. I think it will be a kind of evolving process. But having something to start from foundational wise is definitely.
So we will be working on that list then of items.
So, yeah, I guess, I guess from the council directing, you know, staff, if this is something that you want to work towards and move forward with, give it a try and see how things work out, then maybe it starts with, you know, finding some, some representation from the business community. I know, you know, Joe in the chamber, you know, maybe elected official or something, or the mayor. And then just get a small group to sit down, take a look at that draft, and see if we can pinpoint some things that we'd like to collectively think about working on and get it down to you and see if we can kind of morph that into an agreement.
Yep. I think that's a great way. We, and very least, like I said, you give us some priorities and we can do some work around, hey, here are some ideas to go after some of those priorities. It, I think, gets you guys, hopefully, you know, my hope is that it'll get you guys excited about some of the things that could potentially get done through your community. And ultimately, I hope that's with SEDO. But even if it's not, it might just give you some great ideas and stuff that somebody could work on.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
No, Chris is a great salesman, of course, but no, I like this. I want to go fast.
So we'll get the wheels in motion on this end, and Don will communicate with you as to where we're at.
That's perfect. And if I find an excuse to come up here and visit your beautiful community again, I'd love that. So if you have any other questions or want me to come back at some point, I'm happy to do that, too.
Thank you, Chris.
Absolutely. Thanks for your time.
I would just throw out there, too, I know there's chamber people here, there's business owners here and other things, too. Anybody that feels like having that conversation and sitting down with us up here and looking at that draft, because they haven't seen it unless they were looking at the packet, be a part of the discussion about that first one that we can set this thing in motion with, I think that would be great.
Absolutely. I have a few business cards. I can leave those here. I'll leave a couple here and somebody else there. But, and you know how to get ahold of them, too.
You just have one?
Yeah, I got some up here, too. I only brought three in. I didn't know how many.
So that's been like three cars.
I got one in the car. Leave me out on my own. But yes, absolutely. Anybody, feel free to reach out, shoot me a note or get the information to Don, and he can send it down to me, too. But I'll get it back to you as soon as I can. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to recess our city council meeting to go into a public hearing regarding the senior citizen center. During this public hearing, the council will be making no motions. And we'll go back into our council setting, and that'll be time for motions if we decide to at that point. But no motions during the city council meeting. I know there's several in the audience here this evening, so we'll open it up in the council and talk about this, then we'll turn it over to the public if you want to speak. I'd ask that you limit your speech to three minutes. And if you're here representing a group, if you would speak for the group, that would also be well. So in our packet, there was two letters, one from NSI regarding the situation as they contacted the health department and if they could have meals on wheels in a building that also housed the private business. And that answer was yes, they could. There was also a letter in there from the park board, and there are several here this evening. And the closing comment was, we urge you, the city council, investigate public use possibilities for this property. Also, on our desk this evening, there was two other letters, one from the planning commission, signed by John Wall, and he is here this evening, saying that, as a planning commission, as a complete overview of findings, we see that the transfers of a building would be completely within the scope of what the 2022 comprehensive plan states. There's also a letter there from Clay, Ottertail, and Wilken Counties. And Don, do you want to address this a little more? Did you have a conversation with them?
Yeah, that's what prompted the letter that I just got this afternoon, so it couldn't get in the packet. But I had talked to Jody Lean, who's with Ottertail County Public Health, a little bit about what we were trying to do or what we were looking at up here. And they understand that right now Nutrition Service, Inc. is preparing meals for the seniors in that, in that location, and that potentially, one of the, one of the possibilities or discussions have been around a community center down there. And then also, the conversation of, if possible, can a community kitchen, a commercial kitchen, be in the same location, in the same kitchen as NSI? And what I was basically told and what this, what this letter kind of alludes to is, they can coexist. You don't typically see non-licensed kitchens operating in licensed kitchens, but they can. And so there was some things, you know, what I, what I kind of, kind of laid out was, in this particular case, NSI is in there every day of the week from, from 8:00 in the morning or 11:30 or whatever, preparing meals and distributing meals up until a certain time, whether it's 12:00, 12:30, and then they're done for the rest of the day. And they're not there on Saturday and Sunday. And so them, them times that that kitchen isn't being used by NSI, can that same kitchen be used as a community kitchen, a commercial kitchen for the community to use or people that wanted to rent it? And they said, yes, as long as that space isn't used at the same time. So while NSI's in there, no, nobody else can be in there doing that. But when NSI's not using it, then the other, you know, others can. And there are different, depending on who's going to use it and whatnot, there are different things, whether it's a caterer using the kitchen to take and go off and deliver whatever they prepared offsite someplace else. Obviously, the big thing about that facility is the use of it for congregate dining, you know, like it used to be used for, which then that can't happen regardless if the city holds on to it and has NSI in there and starts using it as a commercial kitchen for the community. You still can't have that type of indoor dining in there or anything like that or meal serving in there until that building is ADA compliant, which is what we've talked about before. The other thing about NSI, as the building says right now, NSI kind of is grandfathered in. What they have in the kitchen works for them. But if the, if the city decided they wanted to keep the space and operate a community commercial kitchen out of there, then there would have to be updates to that kitchen because it wouldn't be grandfathered in order for it to be used for a community kitchen. So that's, that's kind of what the county talked about. Can it be the same space, the same kitchen? Yes, not at the same time, okay? So in a sense, that's what that conversation was all about.
Council have any comments before we turn it over to the public? Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. So we're here to hear from the public on regarding this senior citizen building and what the future holds for it. And I'd ask if you come to the mic, if you would state your name and...
Sure. Hi, Lana Graff, Your Hillbillly Laser, Mayor Councilman. Thank you for holding this public hearing. When I first reached out to Administrator Solba and then the council about the possibility of the senior building, it was with full intention to work with the Meals on Wheels program. It never has been, nor is my intention to evict them from the kitchen. After the last meeting, NSI Program Director Tracy Alenbaum and I connected, and we had a great conversation. As she notes in her letter, the health inspector sees no conflict in the arrangement of two businesses occupying the space. We talked about the Meals on Wheels program and how it's grown and adapted to different setbacks recently with COVID. We agree that this transaction would be a win-win for both of our situations. I think stepping back and looking at it, my intentions for the building and the park's intentions for the building are two sides of the same coin. We both want what's best for the town, its residents and visitors. We just think differently on what's best. We both want to beautify the area. We both want to utilize the building to its fullest potential. I want to do it without disrupting the Meals on Wheels program. I can't speak on what the park board has in mind. It's far too great of a space overlooking the river and its proximity to downtown to stay vacant. Even with all the kickback and naysayers, it goes without saying that I still want the building. And by allowing ownership to transfer to me, I will put the building back on the tax roll and bring jobs and services back to Pelican Rapids. Let me take the financial burden away from you to remodel it and update it and give it a facelift. Let me operate my business out of it for the next period of its life. I want to share a part of a recent conversation between Joe Klaassen, Chamber President, and Kim Peterson, taken from the October 13th Pelican Podcast YouTube interview. Kim states, and I quote, "When people drive through Pelican, what is their first impressions? Some of it is wonderful and some of it isn't, and you fix the things that aren't. People and investors come through, and they will make a decision quite quickly on the health of the town based on the health of its businesses. After the street and Pelican B projects are completed, we're going to have a great-looking town, and we need to have a great-looking businesses who are sustainable. And that work needs to start now because as these potential investors drive through, whether they are driving a camper or motorcycle or a hero purposely, we want to give them reassurance that Pelican isn't turning into a ghost town," end quote. I find it funny how the building, aside from NSI using the kitchen, can sit empty for a year and a half with no action in the fore on improving the space. I've said all along with my inquiries on the building that no matter what happens with the final decision of this, at least my interest has started acquiring for others. In closing, I want to remind you, I first presented to the council May 31st, at the May 31st meeting with my interest and intent on the senior building. At that time, we put a pin in the discussion and decision until local foods, local places, local places... At that time, we put a pin in the discussion and decision until local foods, local places could finalize a feasibility study. That study concluded in midsummer and found that Meals on Wheels and the local foods organization cannot cooccupy the same kitchen. I reintroduced my interest to the council at the September 27th meeting. At that time, I had unanimous support from the council members in favor of the sale of the senior building, contingent on three items. The support of NSI, and approval of the health inspector, which is included in Tracy's letter, a minimum of 18 months' occupancy on the property to ensure that I won't fix and clip, I can give my word that's not my intent, and number three, a purchase price to be determined. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Judith Ingrisson, and I am here representing the park board. You all have a letter in your packet, but I just want to read that letter for public knowledge. Dear Pelican Rapids City Council, the Pelican Rapids Park Board would like to express that we do not support the sale of the former senior center building. As a board, we believe that selling the former senior center building will inhibit growth and development of Veterans Memorial Park. When the former senior center was turned over to the city of Pelican Rapids, the city council granted an advisory role to the park board to explore options for the use of the building. At the time, the park board recommended using the building for future amenities at the planned trailhead for the Heart of Lakes Trail. In the past few months, an alternative plan has surfaced for the trailhead to be relocated to land owned by the school. If successful, this will be a joint effort between the city of Pelican Rapids, Pelican Rapids Schools, and Ottertail County. The park board is in full support of the proposed trailhead relocation. However, details are still being developed, and there is no guarantee that this collaborative effort will be completed. As a board, we believe it would be preemptive to sell the former senior center when trailhead plans are not yet finalized. Selling the senior center building to a private party at this time would eliminate any possibility for its future use by the city. The building itself sits between a public-use park and a public-use library. To sell the property would negate the possibility of any future public use, both for the existing structure or the land. The park board feels that selling the property would inhibit future growth possibilities for the adjacent park and public-use facilities. The Pelican Rapids City Council and the Pelican Rapids Park Board share a common goal of enhancing the city of Pelican Rapids and meeting the needs of our citizens and visitors. We urge you to further investigate public use possibilities for this property, and we appreciate your consideration on this matter. And sincerely, the park board. And then if I just have a couple of minutes, Don, not for the park board, but just for myself, a citizen of Pelican Rapids, I totally agree with Lana, thinking that the city's going to have a great facelift coming up. But there are a lot of buildings on the main street that could be utilized for this type of thing, rather than just something that's already owned by the city and could be utilized for other things. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Maggie Driscoll. At the last meeting, I had a document, and I read the importance of health and wellness for the seniors. A couple of things I've heard today, saying that the building hasn't been utilized, the building hasn't been utilized because we were not allowed to use it for Oaks because of COVID. The other reason why it hasn't been utilized is because of the bathrooms. And they had the updates before you, the city would allow us to use it. And for those people that are here, I just want to share a few things. How did we use it before? We had exercise classes offered twice a week. We organized monthly mine-building social events that included bongo, bingo, Yahtzee, and card games. We coordinated a variety of speakers for health and education. We would have a yearly fall picnic using the park and the facility. We had music and dancing. We had events the week of Oktoberfest. We used the senior center for many fundraisers, which included our fall pie and bake sale. We coordinated foot care clinic for our elders. We had healthcare classes. We collaborated with Meals on Wheels, and we collaborated with Meals on Wheels and provided additional numbers to them. Those are just a few of the things. You know, people think it was never used, but I don't know people who were ever aware how much Oaks used. You know, the elders knew, but not everybody if they weren't in that age group. You know, COVID hit, they couldn't use it, like I said. Bathrooms weren't compliant, we're not allowed to use it. We would love to go back and use it again. And please consider the benefits of the building for the elders and the community, and the possibilities of other opportunities that could benefit many community members, rather than just one business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kathy. Dawn, is your name Dawn? Okay, did you get the same letter that I got about, it's been requested to our office to invite the best practices for licensed kitchens that may not be shared with other parties. Licensed kitchens are not typically shared with unlicensed parties. However, in the case of a community center, there are some models that may allow the multiple-party use. The main objective is that the parties who utilize the kitchen for public food service activities work under a food license. Non-public food service activities should be assessed on the individual basis, with the main objective being maintaining the integrity of the kitchen from a food safety perspective. It's kind of hard to read this, because it's so small, but okay. Okay, and then I can give some samples. Well, most, the biggest thing for having other people utilize the kitchen is food safety and sanitizing and that kind of thing. Make sure that the main contact was for the community center that is responsible for communicating all policies and procedures. Ensure that the community center contact is aware of all food activities being performed in the community center. Ensure that each party utilizing the kitchen for public food services is working under a food license. Ensure each licensed party's food, equipment, and supplies are kept securely and separately from the spaces that may be shared. This includes refrigeration. So my main objective from the NSI point is that we have a kitchen that we can do the Meals on Wheels program in. And that's what I'm here for, is make sure that the Meals on Wheels program continues in Pelican Rapids. I've been there 11 years now, and I would like to stay there another 11 years if possible. But and I think it's really important that the seniors have some place to go, you know. If we were to take the senior center away, by selling it to somebody that they can't be in there, they would have no place to go, because there is no place to go. So that's really important here at this meeting, is to decide which would be best for all. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, for the record, could you state your last name?
Sunny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd ask, let those that haven't spoke speak first.
Can I just have 30 seconds?
Okay. Let's hear from everybody for the first time around.
Judy Talbot, Local Foods, Local Places. The different health inspector checked out the senior building and said that that could possibly work together. This morning, I went out and measured the southeast corner. There's one room in there that may even be big enough for a small commercial kitchen. So it wouldn't even be shared, okay? Local Foods, Local Places, we have a meeting tomorrow. There are USDA architects that can help with planning that. So I guess I really am frustrated that this, we worked two years on Local Foods, Local Places. We've done this kitchen study, and we looked at, oh, if we're going to have to look at lots of industrial park for a kitchen, it's totally frustrating to me. Okay? We really worked hard on this. We would like to be able to save that building for the seniors and have a commercial building, kitchen in it.
Thank you. Next. John, did you want to comment on your letter?
I'll just read the letter.
Could you state your name, please?
John Muller, Chair of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission looked at this in relation to the 2022 Pelican Rapids Comprehensive Plan, and we see that in Chapter 7, page 35, it states, "Economic development seeks to strengthen a community through expansion of its tax and employment base. As the Planning Commission sees the transfer of the empty building in Pelican Rapids, it would take from city ownership, which has no tax revenue, to privately owned, which has tax revenue, that would increase the tax base in the city as Hillbilly Laser intends to fix up the city-owned buildings. As the Planning Commission looked at Section 2 Land Use, we see that Hillbilly Laser would take the existing empty building in downtown and create a business that would fit the commercial zone of Pelican Rapids. As the Planning Commission looked at Chapter 9, Community Services and Infrastructure, the Planning Commission sees that by transferring a building to a private business, it will provide more services or products to the community of Pelican Rapids and its surrounding areas. As the Planning Commission goes back to Chapter 7, Economic Development, the Planning Commission sees that the expansion of the current business, as in many businesses as they expand, there would be possibility of more employment opportunities because of the sale of the building. Also in Chapter 7, we need to rethink vacant space in buildings, adaptive space. Adaptive reuse can help fill the city vacant building space and will provide new and existing businesses, or in this case, expand. As the Planning Commission does a complete overview of the findings, we see that the transfer of the vacant building would comply with the scope of what the 2022 Comprehensive Plan states. And as a private citizen, I would like to say that if the city gets involved in renovating this building, the costs would be astronomical and not within what the city could afford rent at this time. Because it would be at least $500,000 or more just to renovate the building to get it useful.
Thank you. Anyone else? First time around? Anyone else? First time around?
I'm Bob Lindstrom, been a resident here since '71. And I've seen a few things happen in town over the past 50 years or so. And what I'm seeing now troubles me. First of all, the seniors really couldn't improve this building because of finances and the lack of city support, as far as that's my thinking. That's strictly my observation. Secondly, we have a building that is perfectly usable, granted with some renovations, and we need a place in town for a nonprofit, whether it be a senior citizens organization per se, or whether it be through Oaks, or a combination of other groups. We do need the building. The building, first of all, can you even sell it without putting it up for bids? Are there any state regulations, or do we have any charter regulations in the city charter? We have to, first of all, come up with a value. Has it been appraised? And secondly, if we're going to sell it, can we just give it to anybody we feel like? Or does it have to be put up on bids? But I don't want to go that route. I think we should, before we do anything, we have a new city administrator coming on board, hopefully, after the first of the year. Let's give him a chance to kind of look this city over and see what maybe there are things that we should be doing. And I don't think we should sell this building. I don't think it's to the city's advantage one little bit. The little bit of tax revenue that building's going to generate is not worth giving it away. It's too close to the park and the library, which are public facilities. And I do believe that it would be unwise to just dump it now.
Thank you. Anyone else willing to speak? Is there anyone online that would like to speak? No hands raised?
My phone was second-hand.
Anyone else want to speak for the first time? Seeing none. Okay, Maggie, you wanted to speak?
I just wanted to clarify. The paper said...
You need to address the microphone. You want to state your name again?
Okay, my name is Maggie Driscoll. And I just wanted to clarify, in the Pelican Press, it said that Maggie Driscoll had stated that we would take the senior center over, or something like that. I should have brought it. That's not what I said. I would never say that without the board reviewing that statement. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Judy?
Judith Ingrisson. I just want to add one thing. The seniors in this town do need someplace. The seniors, there's a lot of homes owned by senior citizens. They pay city taxes also. There's a lot of things being done in town, and they're wonderful things. They benefit the whole town, but maybe let's just think about what benefits the senior citizens, too, not just the younger population, the kids coming up, the swimming pool. Those things are all great, but the seniors deserve something also.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comments? Anyone else? Last chance. When we leave the public comments, we're going to the council, and then we will not be hearing from the public. So last chance. Any comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the council table here. Council? We can't make any motions at this point. Have we... Any comments before we close the public hearing? Seeing none. So we'll reconvene our city council meeting regarding the senior citizens building. Any comments at this point? Any motions to be made, one way or the other? We heard from the public.
Mayor, do we have an answer for Bob's question about the bidding process or the charter?
I think that when we were talking about the upstairs and going through that process, I'm pretty sure the city attorney made it pretty clear that the city didn't have to bid it out. It was another one of those things, the building's been sitting unoccupied except for NSI for a period of time, just like upstairs, and all of a sudden, somebody came with an interest before the city had discussions about, you know, what they might use it for. And here we are today. So no, there doesn't need to be a bidding. There's nothing in the charter... So no, there doesn't need to be a bidding, there's nothing in the charter about it, so it's the same as the upstairs, basically, the process.
Any other comments? If we do not make a decision tonight, we'll probably be seeing this item again.
Forever.
Now, I, I, I'm on the Planning Commission also, and I stated this last night. This was, it was fairly much my idea to get the senior center from the senior center And my thought process behind that was that it would be used as a community building, trailhead type thing, with the exception of thinking, and this is where being naive bit me in the butt again, but I was thinking that, my thought process was that we would take a bid of the project at a time. We need to update the bathrooms. As a city, as a government entity, if any project goes over $150,000, we have to set it out for bids. And when you set it out for bids, you get architects involved, you get engineers involved, and before you know it, a $100,000 project is now a half a million dollar project. So my thought process was, let's take it a bite at a time. Well, that ship has now sailed because it has, I mean, now it has to be viewed as a whole project. So now, as a city, architects have to get involved, engineers have to get involved, and the price that we heard a couple years ago was in the neighborhood of $700,000. Well, we now know where prices have gone since then. It's probably not $700,000 anymore. It's probably closer to 800 or 900. It's a lot of money. A private owner doesn't have to follow through with those same kind of restrictions or regulations. So for Hillbilly Laser to do the updates on the building, it's a portion of that. And we still keep the Meals on Wheels program in Pelican Rapids. Now, to go to Mrs. Tabit's statement, yes, I'm sure it is frustrating, but we were also told by your organization that the city hall, or, excuse me, the senior center would not work. So we took that as, okay, so we have to start looking for other avenues. So, in my opinion, we do have to look after, I mean, we have to be fiscally responsible. And the amount of money it would take to get that to the point where we could open the doors for public use is not fiscally responsible for an outdated building. She has a question in the back.
Yes?
Kathy, when you made the statement that Judy had said that it would not work...
Yes.
It's because we had a jurific health inspector that believed that we could never put...
I get that.
A kitchen in there. That's, so to verify that, that's the reason why it would never work is because we were, she was told...
Right.
That we can never, ever put a kitchen in there, no commercialized kitchen. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that?
Right, no, and I understand that, that, I mean, so tonight, this is the first that we've heard that it could happen.
Yeah.
Do you understand? I mean, this, tonight, this letter is the first that I have heard that a community kitchen and the Meals on Wheels program could exist in the same building.
I agree.
So that's, so that's new information for us, but that, that goes to the frustration because we were told months ago that it's not gonna happen, so we need to start looking at other things, and at that same time, Hillbilly Laser approaches us, so we kind of start going with that avenue. So, again, I think the money that it would cost for that, to get that building up to date, and before anybody says it, I get it, there are grants available, but we can't, I don't think it's responsible for me to say, okay, let's, let's rely on the possibility of grants, and then the grants not happen, and then that building sits empty, because it cannot be used publicly until it gets updated. And your, the Meals on Wheels program currently is the only program that can operate out of it because it has been grandfathered in. For us to open it as a public building, it has to be completely updated.
Under a private owner, it wouldn't have to be?
Well, correct. Under a private owner, it wouldn't have to be, I mean, she plans on updating it anyway, but it doesn't have to be to the extent that the city would have to, to make it ADA compliant and every other compliant that the government throws at you.
But I think there may be, I don't know what you implied there, but maybe some clarification. If Hillbilly Laser takes over that building with the idea that NSI is going to continue to operate that kitchen, which Lana said she's all fine with that, that's one thing. But I don't know, and maybe you're not implying this, but I'm sure Lana would think differently, possibly, and you can speak for yourself, but if you took over the ownership of that building, would you be comfortable with NSI using that kitchen as well as renting that or using that kitchen, having others in the community use that kitchen as a community kitchen? And I don't know if that's what you're implying, but to me, that would kind of put some burdens on Hillbilly Laser that they might now...
I don't think, I mean, I guess I didn't get any of that.
Okay.
Not at all.
And I...
That's not our decision.
Right.
That would be hers.
I didn't interpret it that way.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Like NSI, NSI, fine.
Right.
Like if you're crossing into the community kitchen conversation, that's a whole, I'm not even part of the picture of that's the conversation.
Any other comments from the council?
Well, I think we all, Lana, some kind of an answer on this, whether we want to do this or not. So I'll make the motion that we go ahead and sell it to Lana Grassroot, and maybe it'll be a second, maybe won't, maybe it'll fail in the motion, but I want to give her an answer tonight.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Discussion?
No questions?
Yes.
Regarding the property sale, or transfer, or whatever we decide, that hasn't been decided either, correct?
Yeah, I'm out.
Lana, maybe you can answer this. Do you ever see your business expanding outside the walls of that building? You know, do you have like an idea? I know you, I've watched some of your videos that you posted, one of the things you'd mentioned were currently outgrowing your space as you're so far ahead of your long-range plan. Is it safe to say that you would be operating out of that building for one year, 10 years?
I would say closer to 10 years than one year.
Closer to 10 years?
Yeah, I would say closer to 10 years, for sure. With the intention of when and if I outgrow it, opening it back up for some sort of a public use rental facility, something to be able to use for gatherings and whatnot.
Perhaps, nobody's decision but your own, but perhaps maintaining ownership.
Perhaps, yeah.
Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
In the park board's letter, they referenced the property and the building kind of both in that letter, and just so everybody's clear, the discussion about the transfer of the building is just the building, it's not the property, right? Everybody understands that. So, if that's the decision that's made, that building will be carved out and given its own parcel number, there's no parking lot portion of it, there's no, nothing to affect the memorial park, it's just the footprint of the building, right?
That's how I see it.
That's my belief.
Okay, because, I just wanted to bring that up, because the park board's letter referenced the property.
Yeah, no, I think that parcel alone is literally five feet out from that building on the outside, it's a very small parcel.
Right, so...
It doesn't include parking lot, it doesn't include anything other than...
But they mentioned building and land, property, and I just wanted to make it clear it was just the building.
We're not disrupting art at all.
Was that the assumption you had under your, in your motion?
Yeah. So with that, with knowing that, and with the question that Kurt asked, I mean, there's no room for expansion, obviously. So would it be better to be in a place that you could build, a building that you could expand within the building?
I know where you're heading with that, but no.
Okay. So, this is... Any other discussion?
Steve's got a question.
This is really frustrating, and Lana's put a lot of time into this. And I hear the thing about the seniors, Maggie, it's not very often a business person comes and wants to be in your community. Yeah, there's empty buildings downtown, but try to buy one of them, it's not, it's not easy, it doesn't, there's storage, so I'm good.
This is a tough topic for, you know, economic development, and here we have someone wanting to purchase a building, whatever the mouth rate is, we still haven't decided on that. But we also have to take in consideration, you know, we have had just written commentary from the park board, who is an advisory committee to the city of Pelican Rapids, and we should hear their concerns. If we do sell this building, it's gonna be landlocked because there's gonna be private property, or public property all around it, there's no room for expansion. And I guess what I'm trying to get at, at this point, I see it premature to sell the building, because there's still possibilities that we could use this for the public, you know, not next year, probably not the year after, but there's still are possibilities.
Well, there's those possibilities, but I think we're kicking the can down the road. We need to give her an answer.
No, I understand your point, yeah. That's just my discussion.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah. One of the things that I keep thinking about is, you know, what Kevin kind of alluded to, 800, 900,000 dollars into that building, it's structurally probably a good building, but that is a lot of money. In light of all the other funds the city's gonna be bonding for in the next two to three, four years, with all the projects we have going on, to add that is a huge burden for the community, really, but, and then Councilman Strand has mentioned before, because of the age of the building, he just has a hard time with putting that kind of dollars into that building also. I think, and this community has, you know, called for a community center for how many years, way before I was here, and you guys were even looking at that at one point. Regardless of how this lands, and I'm gone in, you know, two months, but regardless of how this lands, I really think the community, to give Lana the building may be a good choice, but you need to look at what are you gonna do next? The seniors do deserve something. The community deserves something, of a community center. And yeah, I would maybe hesitate to throw 800,000 dollars at this building, but you better figure out at some point, where's 800,000 dollars gonna go? Because the community wants a community center, and they should have one. But I don't agree that that's necessarily the place. So if you give it up, just start thinking about where is there gonna be one? I just had a meeting on Sunday night with some youth from the high school, and this was one of their concerns, they have no place to go in Pelican Rapids, and during school hours, they're in the school, and after school, there's no place for them to go but the parking lot, and it's been that way for years upon decades. They're looking for a place where they could meet, hang out, under supervision, of course, and that's just something they presented to me at that point. And I think that putting 800,000 dollars into that building, or whatever the price is, with the intent of using it as a, as a community center, is in a sense a Band-Aid, in my opinion. This community deserves a heck of a lot more than that much of a space for a community center. So put them dollars into a real community center. I'm not talking about a PAC like perm has, but put it into something that is big enough to accommodate what you'd like to do, and that building is not big enough. That's my two cents.
Okay, any more discussion of the council?
Call the question.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second to sell the building to Lana Grassroot. All in favor, second or...
I request voice, rook.
Okay, rook.
Strand?
Aye.
Ballard?
Aye.
Mark Raff?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
And Fraser?
Nay. Okay, motion passed. So where do we go from here if we're gonna sell it?
At some point, you're gonna have to go with Lana, I guess, and figure out the terms of the sale, or if you know what they are, you did it tonight. But I guess, based on your motion, she's getting the building somehow. Since we went through a work session-type process to negotiate with Burton for the upstairs, should we do a similar process?
Probably, it's a good idea.
That'd be logical. Call a special, a special work session for that?
Okay, just keep in mind, the next few weeks are gonna be very busy for you guys. Next Wednesday, you have interviews all day, you have a council meeting the next week, so just keep that in mind. I think it's a good idea to have Lana come in and talk about that, but...
Okay, thank you all that partook in the public hearing this evening, and have a good evening.
Mayor, I don't think it should take that long, I mean, meeting with her, and I don't want to put her off, or like, what were we saying, two, three more weeks to meet?
You can do anytime you want.
I mean, can we just do that right now and tell her when to meet?
Or decide when to meet.
Yeah, with her?
Yeah, we can decide, yeah, what days.
Yeah, like Steve said, I don't think it'd take very long. That is a public meeting also, right? Work session?
Yeah.
That could be in the evening.
So do we have, somehow you have to post it, right? I mean, so it has to be, so what's the...
Three days, three days.
Oh, the third? Thursday, the third?
Isn't that the day we have interviews?
That's Wednesday, the second.
Oh, the third, yeah, so it'd be, the interview's the second, the work session on the third. I don't know. That'd be hard for, maybe hard for me.
What the next day?
Friday, the fourth? Thursday?
Fourth would be with us. I like the fourth better.
I can do it the fourth.
So third doesn't work?
Well, it can, probably.
Third would work for me. What time? Third? Any, any time after 12:00 if you need...
I'll be honest with you, since I'll be...
If it has to be in the morning, I can make it...
Taking days off work, it can be either morning, early, or afternoon, late, would be the best for me.
Three? Three on the third?
What's late?
Five.
What day are we looking at right now?
The third, Thursday?
Thursday, the third?
That gives us enough time for posting, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So five o'clock, you're saying?
Or, or...
Does the third work for you?
I can do seven or eight in the morning, too.
I'll make anything work.
It's just a matter of, yeah. It's just a matter of, you know, certain things.
Do they do it early in the morning, early in the morning?
I'm just flexible in the fact that early in the morning.
Things going, so.
It doesn't matter.
Somebody say a time.
Five?
Five o'clock.
Is that correct?
On the third?
Five o'clock on the third.
Okay.
That's a Thursday.
Is that okay with you, Lana?
Yep. Here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, moving right along, item number eight is 2024 Complete Street Project. We have Tom Pace, who sat patiently with us this evening, learning about city government. Tom?
I can hear. Good evening, everybody, it's Tom Paceman, that face you don't know, but just real quick update on Pelican Town here. As you've probably seen, trees are being dropped left and right along the highway, so. It's pretty heavy, again, this.
Haven't heard.
They're not, they're not, so. Yeah, I said, the first, based off the project, as you can imagine, phones have been ringing all over the place, but, but good, good discussion, and for most points. And this year, we're taking on trees pretty much, it's on Howie 59, which may die right away, and then 108 West, may die right away. No trees removed, out right away, no, that's. Those all the trees have been marked, so that's been good, people can see the trees that are a possibility coming down, so that's, that group, good discussion, although we just have work that maybe wasn't tweaked in front of design. That is happening as we speak, that people get pretty upset when trees come down and what, that sort of thing. But this year, with system 59 probably done, probably next week, I'm guessing. But this year, they'll come back next year, and they call rest that are off right away or close to the right of way, so. This company's pretty, pretty bad, so that's pretty, pretty impressive, how we know that they're done, but. Any questions on, on tree park before I move on? We talk about trees a lot.
One question.
Yep.
So when do you start 108 trees?
108 to the east?
Yeah.
Next winter.
Okay.
Yes, most of the trees, in our sense of our off right away, aren't 108 east.
Because I had a question, and I, I answered it with, I think, 2025, but I was off a little bit.
You're off a little bit, yeah, we might give more time to add your redesigns and the impact, the maintenance impact on that 108 east, which are more off the right of way. So some of those are happening as we speak, you know, like a parcel of family, that's been addressed already, so we'll get that, so we're going to find trees that call you too, so. It's good, you know, to poke the air on those trees, people can see it's happening.
So what's the purpose of taking the trees down?
The trees are in the way for the sidewalk, and I'm sure these paths are structures.
Okay, so my only question is.
Yep.
Across is the ambulance building, ambulance garage building on 108 West.
Yep.
Weird, you know, seven, and I said I, I don't want to get on.
Is right up against the sidewalk. There's, the tree that's being removed is actually behind the building. So you can't even see that tree unless you're coming from the west. So why is that being taken off?
That tree is not part of Mendat project.
It's got big red dots on it.
It's not, that's, it's not part of the planting on trees as well, that's not a Mendat one, because it's, that's different, different thing. A Mendat tree is next to the rest.
Somebody else running around marking trees.
Same paint.
That just didn't make any sense to me, that the building's not in the way, but the tree is.
Excellent question, but that's not, that's not, not Mendat, so. Yeah, and then recently, we were talking about on the beautification committee, was the trees are coming down, looking at, maybe plant some trees in the future, talking with Don and some of the people in town, we were planning, had a meeting in this building here on Thursday, November 17th. We're going to bring our designers and central office, we're going to bring our ideas, things that we can put back in the right of way that we've been in there. As you can imagine, it's a pretty small, you know, space we had in between the curb and the sidewalk, so some things we can put in there, we'll bring some ideas, some options, and some people from the city can meet here and kind of make some decisions of what they want us to put back in along the project. We met last week to talk about the grid railing, and with you and, plus Brian, I mean, side on the, on the grid written in colors, it's going to match the brick railing, that's over the, the Pet Bridge, that's west of town. They're putting that same bridge style railing on top of the bridge itself, and, and that retaining wall just by itself, so it'll be exact same pattern, but it'll be in black, it's going to look pretty nice. So that was that paper by Van Datsch, no conscious, maybe on that one, but the city picked the colors, so that was pretty cool, so, so that'd be, be pretty nice, so. Anyone interested on that part, another?
When was that meeting, what time?
Five o'clock to seventeenth.
And there is, right now, I believe, the list of individuals, city representatives that'll be part of that, I think it's at ten, nine or ten? I'm just trying to get one more possibly from the park board, because I have nobody from the park board, just to check.
So do we have to be on that committee to come to the meeting?
No.
No. So is it posted as a possible quorum?
It can be.
Probably should.
Yeah, we'll post it then, in case three or more of you want to come up and be a part of the conversation.
Good stuff, it's fun to pick stuff out, you can actually put on there, trees, planters, the biotest, if anyone's in there, we have options that will, will work, so. Please come if you're available. And the last thing that they talked about is ADA, I guess, you call doorways or, or stoops that are off the right of way. I thought, I think, last meeting a month or so ago, and, and so, you know, we, because we put a list together, and we probably figured businesses that are, that could make some changes. So basically, the way we're, Mendat will stop at the right of way line, which is edge of sidewalk for building blocks. A lot of doorways are just off the right of way, where just, they're not ADA compliant, and this is opportunity for the city, if they wanted to, to bring those up to ADA compliance, if they're too steep or whatever the issue with, they're cracked up. As an option I can do now with the project, I kind of want to know that tonight, because all of our designs are based off the upside elevations. So if we're stopping at the right of way, it's fine, we're going to go farther back to the doorways, and that changes how we, how we design our roadways. I need to know that tonight, so I can move forward with our designing. So I know we have middle it, and Brian had it, you have walked around, talked?
I have walked around, talked to people, and again, I had managed to get to eight of them that were open, and seven of them were, wanted to do it, but they all want to know if the city's going to pay for it? If they're have to pay for it, or if the city's going to pay for it and be assessed? That's what they want to know, because some of them, it's like, makes a difference.
Yeah, it's almost like if the city covers the funds, they're more apt to do it, if the city won't pay for it, then some of them may.
Some of them want to do it.
So how much is it?
The total, well, it's like seventeen thousand, but the total for all the businesses is twelve thousand, eight hundred. And then the city itself on our sidewalks is about four thousand, forty-two hundred dollars.
Well, I mean, just for, to, to make the businesses ADA complaint, what's that?
Twelve thousand, eight hundred, eighty-six dollars.
And that's just an estimate, we won't know what it actually is until it's bid on.
These are just estimates at this time, but it's.
They were okay with being assessed, that? Or did?
Some of them, some of them, like, I just want to know, you know, we want to know what it is, and so I'm like, I will get the council, and then we'll go from there, so.
But they, they really haven't given you a yes or no answer?
Possible, lots of possibles.
Lots of yeses if the city will pay the bill.
Right.
Which, in the scope of it, if it's not much over twelve thousand dollars, isn't a very big bill.
That's pretty minor.
I think that would show a good faith effort by the.
You want to make that motion?
Well, I, I would like to make the motion with the exception of, we don't have a true solid estimate yet, and if it turns into twenty-eight thousand or thirty-five thousand, then, then I'm in trouble.
Definitely a risk, you know, it could, but, you know, concrete goes up in, you know, a year and a half, or. The, the lighting is January, 24th, so, so a year has to be left, so prices probably will go up a little bit, that's a risk for everything, whether it's green lights, or by tumors, or rock, that's a risk that.
It hasn't seemed going up significantly, maybe five percent, like everything else, but.
But if you think about it, the city's bill for this is eleven million dollars. What's your twenty?
Well, true, and they're currently twelve, but.
Well, that's a slippery slope to start getting on. I know, but I don't want to be involved in that slippery slope at all.
That was the total figured as of today, though, I mean, roughly, the estimate. I would make the motion then that the city cover, cover the cost of making the sidewalks, doorways, ADA, just as, to get everything uniform in the city and show good faith towards our business, community on Main Street. And we're here to help them get through this project, not hurt them further.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion?
Discussion.
So you're saying pay for it outright, no possibility of assessment or anything, just pay for it?
I think, I think just as a, as a, we're here to help you get through this, what's going to be a really tough two-year project, and we should just pay for it.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close the same, motion carried.
All right, anything else before, yeah.
Do you have a fancy, like, old timmer or whatever, you can go up to a business and tell them exactly, you know, it's going to be an inch and a half this way or that way, or? Because you said the street was going to be.
It's not, it's, they made the slope of the, the slope of the pavement the biggest thing, any crack, any lip, any, like, a trip hazard per se.
But how do they know where the sidewalk is going to be?
How do they know what it's going to be?
Yeah, the elevation.
Well, based what the doorway is, what, basically flat, with the step.
Well, how is it going to match up, how do they know where it's going to meet the, the elevation?
The elevation of the streets coming up.
Streets, the sidewalk?
If the doorstep is here.
I got that part, Tom.
It'll flap the door, like this, it'll be flat.
They're like.
The vertical will be the same, this is going to be the slope of the step will be adjusted. And that, it can all across the whole road, that's why the importance to design here, and go toward the center.
And that will keep a good grade for water slope away back out into the gutter.
Yep. So, so pretty flat, based on the doorway to the curb is going to be pretty flat, so it's nice to be de-locked in it.
So how many inches is that, like?
Depends on the, on the, on the individual doorway stoop, some are steep, some are flat, they're all, they're all very small.
There's, there's a couple, especially on the south end, that have steps going in.
Yeah.
Those will be virtually impossible to match up. The one specifically will never, the other one will just have, I think, one, a landing and then in, like, almost get rid of a step, because it's just small, but the other one, there's no way.
So like Ace Hardware, is that too steep?
Um, I just talked to Kevin, the engineer, about that one yesterday, because I was surprised it wasn't on the list, and he was going to send somebody over and take a look at it. And just to double check, so.
Thanks.
Any question in the audience? Do you want to come forward and state your name?
Well, I got another. Uh, my name is Andrew Johnson, our step is too steep at Riverview, feel free to come in anytime. My question was, was, you know, we're talking about the grade away from buildings and stormwater, and this is for Tom. You know, this project is built for a four-inch rain, you know, for our stormwater, you know, moving stormwater. You know, we had two four-inch rains in April, and we have, you know, I mean, this is a little different demographic of, of landscape that we're dealing with, where all of this water comes to one area, and it comes in my door, you know, so it's, you know, four inches of rain in Barnesville maybe disperses a little different. Four inches of rain in Pelican Rapids comes into the beauty cellar in Riverview Place, and, you know, now's the time, if that's going to be bigger, it's, it's not going to stop raining. Rain, you know, rains are getting heavier, it seems like.
That's not what size, though, the storm system's going to be greatly improved.
But it's built for a four-inch rain.
Four-inch rain in, in, in one day.
In one, yeah.
With two, with two four-inch rains.
It happens.
I mean, our storms are getting bigger, because, I mean, we were all here in April and May, you know, so. I mean, feel free to come in my basement the next time it's, you know, rains over four inches after 2025.
We'll have, we'll have a new storm system that'll not be plugged, which will be very beneficial to us.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you, it's tough, I mean.
I did.
Okay, thank you. Item number nine is Winter Maintenance Agreement Resolution 2022-19, Superintendent Olson's going to speak to that, and that is also included in our packet.
This is, yes, this is the resolution we sign in the Hottontown County every year. This year was out of San Salt Shed, I did have to increase it to a hundred fifty to two hundred yards, because we will be buying all of our San Salt from them, and subway stone, we just needed approved, so they will purchase the salt, San Salt this year, so.
Yeah, the operating agreement, same, same every year, other than. I make a motion to approve the operating agreement with Hottontown County.
Second, motion second, discussion, 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 hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
It's his decision of the night.
Is this a street report?
Okay, we're deleting item number ten, but let's go to item number sixteen, which is the Resolution 2022-20, Resolution approving State of Minnesota joint power agreement with City of Pelican Rapids on behalf of its city attorney and police department. We have a chief statum with us this evening. That resolution was in our packet, and Chief, if you want to address this?
Kevin, this is just the, we do a five-year agreement with the State of Minnesota, with the DCA, so we can, and myself, or the police department, and the state, and city attorney, can share information, pertaining to criminal activities and post activities that happen. This is a five-year agreement with the state and the DCA, before, so.
Nothing is.
Questions that we have, or answer, or.
Language all the same as previous?
Yep.
I move to approve Resolution 2022-20, Joint Powers Agreement.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, 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 hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried, thank you, Chief. Uh, let's go down to item, uh, fourteen, People's Service Contract Agreement. We have Greg staying with us this evening, and Greg, thanks for being here, didn't expect you, but it's a pleasure. Do you want to explain a little bit about this service agreement, and what we've done in the past, and if there's any changes to this one?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilor, now, Don, as a tab, you're the mayor, the president of People's Service, and I'm working on it, and I'm going to here present it, Don.
Yeah, so Mayor, if I may, can I basically just kind of walk you through, I put copies of the service agreement, gave each one of you guys a copy, and I'm just going to walk through some certain areas of it, point you to them, just so you can kind of get a gist, but there was a, a major change to how we figure the increases every year, and I'll get to that. But for the most part, all the general language of this contract stayed the same. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to have you go to page one of the agreement, and on the bottom of page one, one point one, it basically shows that this agreement is going to commence on January first of 2023. So we're kind of being a little proactive in getting this thing together, and the old agreements, basically, it was kind of a, it started in the middle of the year, and we've been kind of going, so there's been some, a little bit change as it relates to the beginning of the agreement. So that's the first thing I wanted to point out, it starts on January first now. On page two, on one point four, each year that we do an increase, there's a certain percentage of this agreement that is used for just general maintenance, and you see in one point four, there's a number seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventeen. What that number represents is non-capital maintenance expenditures. So as People's Services is out there, and they're operating the plant, any day-to-day expenditure that comes up, they pay for until we hit nine thousand, or seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventeen. Anything over that is the city's expense. That number, basically, the reason I pointed out is because that number was lower, five percent lower last year, which is the percent that our contract is going up this year, and I'll get to that in a minute. And then I'm going to jump all the way to page seven.
I'll jump in quick on that, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventeen, that's a true-up fund, so if we only spend ten thousand of it, at the end of the year, we cut the city back a check for the.
And you've done that in the past?
Yes, yes, yes.
And then on page, page seven, under Article four, four point one, there's the, the amount of twenty-two thousand, four fifty-seven. That number is what we pay People's Service monthly to operate the plant, and that represents a five percent increase over last year. And it's only for, in, in the case of the, the maintenance expenditures of seventeen thousand, nine hundred, and the twenty-two four, that's just a one-year number, even though this is a five-year contract, okay? So now I'm going to jump to page eight, and page eight, under Article four point two, it kind of talks about the, um, the CPI increases. And in the past, our annual increases were always whatever the CPI was from June to June, and the reason it was June to June, originally. And the reason it was June to June originally was actually from, I think, September to September. But for budgeting purposes, I asked them to change to, to, uh, June to June, so I had enough time once we got the increase letter from people service. I had time to figure it into the budgets and everything, in the water sewer budgets. And so, uh, it's the CPI from June to June, and in the past, it's always been whatever the CPI was, that's what the increase was. Well, the city got a big benefit from that in a sense because if you look over prior to COVID, the CPI is always zero to maybe two point, averaging about 2%. So, the city basically was, it was just going up 2% every year. But people service, just like every other organization, their cost of doing business and wages and stuff would typically go up higher than that. So, the city really benefit, benefited from all previous years. Well, last year, the CPI, because the way we figured it, inflation was what last year? Uh, 8-point something percent or whatever? But to our benefit, our, our, uh, rate increase was only like 5.1% because of where the cutoff was in the, in the year. If it would have been later in the year, it would have been, the increase would have been higher. Well, then come up to this last year, inflation or the percentage increase was like over 9, 9.1.
It was 8.1, yeah, it was 9.1.
9.1, okay? Well, for the city to basically jump at a 9% increase in this contract would have been a huge increase. So, in talking with people service, you know, I expressed my concern with the sustainability with those kind of, you know, inflationary numbers up. So, I talked to Greg, and then ultimately, in talking with, with Chad, I believe it was at people service, and we came to the, to the agreement that, um, we would change the formula. It would still be based off the CPI, but in a sense, there'd be a protection to the city that it would never go beyond a certain amount, and it would never go below a certain amount to protect people service. So, what we came up with was the CPI each year plus 1% as a constant, but it would never go below 3%. That protects people service. But it would never go above 7%, which the city... So, what they did also in this new agreement was, we just agreed to a 5% increase, and that increase would basically stay in effect. And then we wouldn't see the, the plus one going to affect us until, uh, the next year. So, starting in January of 2023, it would just be that 5% increase. And then when we come around to the 2024, uh, rate increase, it would be whatever the CPI is, plus 1%, but guaranteed it would not go as, as, as... So, that's, that's kind of how we, uh, did the rate change formula. And then on page eight, 5.1, it just talks about this, determine this contract is till December 31st, 2028. It's the five-year agreement, and every five years, we, we redo things. Page 12, I'll jump to just quickly. Page 12 just kind of is a, for those that haven't seen this agreement before, it just lays out Exhibit A, it's, it's a description of our facilities. This is the facilities, the water sewer that they maintain. If you ever wanted to see a description and the detail of it, it's right there. And then page 13, through, uh, the end of the, the document, is really more detail, Exhibit B, but it's more detail specifically of what services people service provide for us. So, and, and pretty much all of that is what was in the original documents, too. I just wanted to kind of point out that exhibit for you. So, um, what I'm looking for and recommend for the council tonight is, I think we've got a fair agreement in, in light of what inflation has done and what it's anticipated to do over the next several years. Maybe not several, but a couple of years anyway. I would ask that the council approve the mayor and the city clerk signing the new agreement.
I move to approve the agreement.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion same, motion carried. Thank you, Greg. Do you want to stick around for our next item for visiting purpose?
Yes, mayor.
Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe Steve was going to ask this, too.
No, go ahead.
But I was going to say, well, Greg's here, and we've just talked about this. If, if Greg would have anything to add about how things are going out there, the staffing out there, you know, just in general, unless Steve, if you had something to...
I was just curious in your world supplies, and I, I mean, is pricing going crazy on...
We've been warned by Hawkins, you know, one of you have. Hawkins Chemical, ones that supply the ferro, because you guys are a huge user. We've been warned several, especially with the railroad strike that was going to happen, that was going to be a big player and everything. Uh, but we've been warned, watch out, you know, it's, the prices are all over the boards. Um, I don't know if you've seen it that much, because you guys buy the ferro direct, oh, which is, you're buying more because you use so much. And I don't know if it's been going up that higher.
I haven't looked...
Unfortunately, Hawkins bought out DPC. They basically, they don't like it when we use the word monopoly, but whatever else you call it, um, that's where you get it from.
So, is everything available? Are there shortages or...
So far, we've not had shortages. There's wait times on pumps, different stuff like that, or if you need certain electronic components, things like that. Um, there's wait times, some things you gotta improvise. But always, not so bad.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions for Greg? Okay, thanks, Greg. Let's move on to item number 11, MPCA PFOS MOU, and that was in our packet. And Don, if you want to address that, and Greg, if you have any comments, please feel free to have it.
Yeah, this is kind of, uh, um, something that's been in motion for quite a while. We've, we've, you know, I think brought up our, at different times, PFOS in, during council meetings, and I, and, uh, the coalition's been here. Elizabeth has talked about this when she's here and stuff, too. But, um, in, in a nutshell, from conversations with the MPCA, with MESRB, meetings that we've had, you know, what, what kind of has been laid out by the state is, is, uh, they picked, I believe it was 90 different facilities throughout the state or something like that, that they were going...
It's the facilities with the SIUs, significant industrial users.
Like the plant.
Turkey plant.
Turkey plant. And they picked all these communities, and they said, we're going to have these communities, the MPCA, we're going to have these communities sample for this PFOS, which is, uh, I don't even know how to describe it, but it's what you see all the time.
Man-made chemicals that don't break down.
Yeah, plastics that we use every single day.
It's basically a moisture barrier, something like you're going to see, a great example would be the microwave popcorn. The bags of microwave popcorn, it's really moist on the inside, but why don't that moisture ever get to the outside? It's lined with PFOS. You got your non-stick pan, that's another one. You got your stain guard, your Scotch gun, whatever they call it, they use to put on your furniture. All that kind of stuff is all PFOS.
So, so what the, the MPCA wants to do is they want to try and get some hot type of an idea or a handle on how much of this stuff is coming through our waste streams into the rivers and whatever. And so, they decided that the best way for them to collect data on this stuff is to, to turn around to all the communities that have these significant industrial users, like the turkey plant, and, and make them take samples, do sampling. And so, what they came up with and what they want all these cities to do is agree to, to sign a memorandum of understanding, which lays out the city's role in taking the samples, um, some of the other requirements on the cities. And then the MPCA is also going to be doing some stuff, um, to help us kind of do this. But the one thing we're not quite sure on yet is, are they going to pay for it? Now, we, we kind of learned today, uh, just before the council meeting, we, we were initially led to believe that, that the MPCA is trying to get money from the legislature to pay for, and then have somebody run around and take all these samples. And each, each community is going to have to do two. Well, for Pelican Rapids, for us to do two samples, the expense of doing them two samples was about $6,000. And so, we've got that built into the utility budgets, which you're all going to get to listen to me talk about in, in the, the coming weeks. But, uh, we learned today that, um, even though the legislature initially didn't do anything to pass any legislation to allot money for MPCA to pay for all this stuff, there's a possibility now that that's going to happen or has happened or something. So, we'll see. But anyway, in short, what this is telling us is that the city's going to have to do two samples. Once we get them samples taken, submitted, and they get assessed, if we find we have no PFOS, then there's, there's one of three different categories we'll be put into. Category number one means you don't have any, you don't have to sample anymore. Good for us to begin with. Uh, might have to take up sampling at a later date. There's two other categories, but that depends on if you find PFOS and at what levels that you might get category, you know, thrown into. But aside with that, um, the city also is going to have to create a monitoring plan based on them sample results. Again, if we don't have any PFOS, our monitoring plan's going to probably look so mu, a lot different and be very minimal compared to a community that shows up where PFOS is and their affluent coming out of their plant. The other thing, um, the MPCA has things that they have to complete by November 1st. They have to give us the documents and kind of lay out what they're expecting that, you know, our plans have to show. And then, um, we complete a sampling plan. That has to be done by January 1st of 2023, and our first sample's taken by March 31st and submitted by 20, March 31st, 2023. So, we've got some time for this all to get developed. But the one thing that, you know, that, that, uh, the coalition and MESRB has kind of said is, there's nothing in the MOU that's of concern. And the benefit to the cities by signing the MOU is, then, pretty much they're telling us it won't end up in your NPDES permit. By doing this, we pay, do two samples, and we may be done with it. But if we don't do this, in a sense, what they hold over you, if it gets put in your new permit, which we're still waiting to get ours, if our new permit has these samplings, requires us to do sampling for PFOS, it'll be for a five-year period, and it'll be a lot more expensive. So, you know, you know, Greg may want to comment or maybe has some comments on this, too, but from everything that we've been told, uh, from what Steve's heard, from what Brent, uh, has heard, and what we've heard is, there's no reason not to sign this, but there is a big reason why you would, would kind of put it off because it might end up in your permit, so. Any questions?
Since we haven't gotten the permit, is there a possibility that'll be in the permit anyway?
Uh, they're saying no. If, if, you know, in a sense, what they're saying is if the city will do this, the cities will do this so that the, the, the MPCA can start gathering the data. I think it's pretty safe to say, um, not 100%, but it's pretty safe to say that our permit's probably going to come out sooner than they're even going to be able to evaluate all the data. And if our plant actually, through our two samples, shows that, that we don't have any, then it's probably also likely that there won't be anything testing-wise in our permit this round. And I think the permits are five-year...
They're five-year permits, yes.
Five-year permits, so maybe five years from now, it might be different. But we really don't want it to be in this permit. That will be getting soon, hopefully.
The reason I was chuckling is they're five-year permits, but...
Yeah, our five-year, five-year permit, uh, expired about 10 years, 15 years ago.
I think it was 2016, I was wondering, was it 14, maybe?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, but, but I think, you know, they were calling short staff, calling whatever, but they just have taken a long time to get around to it. And I think, I think the chloride things that we've kind of brought up from time to time that they're concerned about, the PFOS things they're concerned about, I really truly think that's one of the reasons why we haven't seen our renewed permit, because they're waiting to iron this stuff out before they throw our permit at us.
Correct. One of the things with this PFOS testing is everything has, right now, it's got to get shipped out of state. Supposedly MBTL Labs, which is in New Ulm, is buying the equipment, property equipment to do these. But I just had at another facility, it was, I just looked earlier, November 18th or 21, they pull our samples for PFOS in the water? Because I believe even your wells have been tested for water. I don't think we got results back yet. But it was November 18th, and I just got the results today from last November. So, it's not a fast turnaround either. I'm not sure once we get more labs doing this, that it's going to be quicker turnaround. I'm not sure how that works, but...
So, I'm saying, oh, go ahead.
Wasn't there some previous PFOS testing done here, though?
Yeah, we did a test on our affluent here, and there was none, which is a good sign. So, if, if, if things work out in our favor, MPCA will take care of collecting the samples because it's so specialized. The MPCA will collect our two samples, they'll incur the cost to do it, and it won't fall on us. We got a plan that it will, but it may be not. And then, um, the fact that we know we don't have any coming from the turkey plant now, then, then basically, that would, that shows, you know, a pretty good sign that we won't, we won't show any in the samples we do do, and we'll be done with it.
And now there's testing, though I know I just talked to Sheri, who is here. We had our MPCA, um, bio solids coordinator, she was here last week for an inspection, and that actually went fairly well. But she's also the PFOS for the MPCA, she's the one that's heading that up. She says everything's now in parts per trillion, it's no longer parts per billion, it's yards per trillion. So, the testing we did, I'm not sure what they did at that time, you know, if it was non-detectable. She said now everything's reported parts per trillion. So, it's very minute, but it's, uh, they're finding cases, I believe it's liver cancer is what this is causing, so.
I move that we approve the signing of the MPCA MOU.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
And that would be signed by the mayor.
Yes. Discussion.
Can I, what's a, what's an example that would, that goes down the sewer that would cause that?
What's that?
What, what would cause that reading to be some trillion or whatever?
If an industry or something like what turkey plant or they were, what would they be doing up there that potentially would cause their affluent to have PFOS in it? Or any industry?
You know, any, this is used in so many different, um, products, that's a problem. Even washing dishes, you know, if you got the non-stick pan, you wash your dishes, so that'll come off, but...
So, if a manufacturer of those pans that do that non-stick, if they're producing those and manufacturing those, you know, they're putting that stuff on the pan, but something, not all of it's good, some of it might get sprayed out here or there or whatever and get washed down the drain.
And it's all part of that label, forever chemicals. Get rid of them.
Terminology we use tonight was probably kind of incorrect, because when we say we didn't have any here, well, there is some. What they're trying to find out is if, if anything in Pelican Rapids is adding to it.
And they don't know what the health limits really are at this time.
Because these chemicals do not break down, so they're everywhere in the world right now. You can test snow in Antarctica, and it'll be there.
They said it's in the bloodstream of polar bears.
Oh, jeez.
Any more discussion?
I want to know how they found that out.
Is it mobile native to, native to Alaska or a...
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion same, motion carried. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Item number 12 is the Audit Engagement Letter, which is in our packet from Carlson CPA's and advisor, Danielle, do you want to speak to that, please?
I do. Um, we sign this audit engagement letter every year with, um, Carlson SV. It's basically, it's the same as every other year, but it's basically them saying, you know, you are, um, audits for 2022. And it just talks about all the things that they'll do and all the things that they expect staff to do. And I think that it will not exceed, I thought I saw it on in here, of 16,100. It'll not exceed 16,100 for the 2022 audit.
I move to approve the audit proposal.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
Nothing has changed.
Discussion, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion same, motion carried. Item number 13, Library Board Appointment. I was supposed to bring forward a name to, uh, fill in for the vacated, uh, library position and whoever I recommend would, uh, start immediately in that position. I'd like to bring forth the name of Judy Tabit, and that has to be approved by the city council.
Move that we approve the appointment of Judy Tabit to the library board.
Second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion same, motion carried. Congratulations, Judy. Item number 15 is Project 85 City Hall Payroll... Item number 15 is Project 85, City Hall pay request. We have two of them, request number nine for $32,864, request number 10, $38,610, and those are in our packet. Don, did you want one or two motions here?
You can do one motion to approve request number 10, or nine and request number 10.
One motion?
You could.
Okay.
Just for the council's information, this is this project, the City Hall project, and forever we've been trying to get Minco Construction to come back and take care of the punch list that we had. If you notice, for the longest time, there was lights outside that weren't working and, Minco was, was kind of, they have new, new ownership and they finally reached out to me, the new owners, and really wanted to get this taken care of. And so they came over and met with Brian Olson and I. We went through every item on the punch list and they had their guys here the next day and they were working on it. The lights, basically, they, they, you know, said as far as the lights go, the day they put the light in, of course, this project's been done for, what, three years, four years? But he said the warranty on the lights will begin the day they get that light working. And they, they got the light working, whatever they did, and within a couple of days it went back out again and they were right back over. The electricians came right back over and what it, when they ended up doing was just getting a whole new light. But once they got it in, of course, ordering and all that stuff, once they got it in, they came over and were really Johnny on the spot to get it done. So everything on the punch list is done and there's no reason not to finish paying this thing out and closing this project up, so.
Someone want to entertain a motion to pay request number nine and 10?
I move to pay, I lost the numbers here, the two requests.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's aye, motion carried. Item number 17 is dam bridge grant agreement. That doesn't sound right. It's in our packet, Donald speaks enough.
In the packet, kind of, is the, is a copy of the grant with the state for the, for the replacement of putting the bridge across the river. And I'll just kind of talk a little bit about some of the terms in there, but it's effective October 1st, 2022, which we're already in, expires on December 31st of 2024. So we have two years to, to get this thing in. The grant amount is not to exceed 260,000 from a total project cost 2000, or 520,000, kind of the way all these grant works. You know, you put an estimate together because you have to have one to submit the grant application. That was the estimate we had at the time that the grant application needed to be done. And so that's the number that was used. Obviously inflation and everything else, it'll be interesting to see where the, where the bids come in, but at least the grant paperwork was, is complete, completed or will be completed by the state once you guys approve it. In there, there's articles that deal with having to follow state bidding requirements and other state laws as it relates to prevailing wages and all that stuff, which the engineers also, I sent a copy of this grant, the grant document over to them, the contract. So if they could at least look at it and make sure that, you know, all that stuff is not an issue. There's reporting, there's, there's a signage requirement, requirement in there, which I'd never seen before, but I know they've been out there because you've seen the signs. And you have to have a sign someplace up by the location that says this was funded in part by federal and state dollars. And so, and we have to buy that sign. So I did reach out to them, make sure it was a requirement, and it is, but she also pointed me to the DNR site that shows where the sign is. And so I was able to get it and I already got Brian, he ordered $30 to get a sign that we have to stick up there that says state's funding this, you know, so whatever. There's also reporting requirements that we'll have to do, that they provide state forms to do, to fill out in order to, there's a report that has to be done every January 1st, but we anticipate the first one after this January is going to be pretty simple. Project's not done yet. The next one that we do in January of 2024, project's done, pretty simple. And then there is a requirement, as in most state-funded or where you get state funds to do different things on, on properties, there is a land retention and deed restriction on this, which means that until the end of eternity, that has to stay in ownership of the city, the bridge. Of course, it probably will, that's a city park. And matter of fact, you already have, I think that park is already in, in, you know, there's deed restrictions on the park already. It always has to be a park, so nothing out of the ordinary there. And then we're able to, based on the timing of this, it's two years to get this done. They don't want just sending in pay requests every month, but we can do four times through that duration with the last one being the final pay request. And so we'll just have to hold on to receipts and all that stuff and make, you know, every six months, put in a pay request or something. So we obviously want a bridge in there. It's great that they're giving us $260,000 towards putting it in. I need the approval for the mayor and myself to sign that grant document.
I make a motion to approve the grant document regarding the bridge.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion.
I'm almost positive this is a stupid question, but with the widening of the river now, I mean, is that, how does that affect, does that affect this at all, or?
Yeah, it does because when, when we originally did, and the widen, like when they were here and they talked about the widening, it made sense to do what they're doing. But kind of one of the effects of that is this was going to be a 100-foot bridge and now it's going to 120-foot bridge. So we know, and I think I have brought that up, that, you know, we had kind of, the council had kind of appropriated about 250 or that 260, basically, coming from liquor store savings. Well, we know it's going to be higher than that now because of the widening, but we also anticipated without knowing what the bids come in at, it's possible it might not, I doubt it because of inflation and everything else, that it's going to cost more. And I anticipate that, you know, we're probably going to have to, because the state's not going to, if it, if it's more money, the state's not giving us any more than $260,000. So I anticipate that we're probably going to have to get this project totally done. It's probably going to be more around $300,000.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Say it, motion carried. Item number 18 is planning commission minutes, which are in your packet. We have Chairman Waller and Members Holt and Ballard with us this evening, so we have questions, this is just an FYI. Any questions, gentlemen? If not, we'll move on. Item number 19 is park board minutes in your packet, that's also an FYI. We have Park Board Member Van Holmgren with us this evening, if you have any questions for him. Any questions? Hearing none, letting you guys off way too easy. So let's move on. Item number 20, administrative report, Don.
Since the last meeting, actually, it wasn't at the last meeting, since the last September meeting, aside from working with the clerk to get all this stuff for tonight's meeting put together, I had various meetings, what I met with Min.com, alluded to a couple of them with the bridge railing. We also had the typical monthly meeting that we do every month, but there was one meeting that basically, there was more of Min dot talking about the staging and, you know, kind of logistics around the projects. And so I sat in on that meeting too, and Brian Olson was there also just to kind of get an idea. I think at some point the council will get more information because what they were, what they were talking about was the detouring around the city, within the city, as it pertains to the project. And so it was just, you know, ideas, they had some ideas about where they were going to reroute traffic, especially because you've got two types of traffic. You got the traffic, semi-traffic that's just coming through Pelican, not stopping here, coming from Northern Minnesota to interstate, whatever. And then you've got the semis that are coming to Pelican to make deliveries downtown to what, you know, the Turkey Plant or whatever. And so just how they're going to route the ones that don't need to come into Pelican around town, that type of thing. And then also within the local community too, you know, where will we put at certain areas of the community during the project? They kind of are going to move things along in like two-block chunks, you know, and so local traffic, how do they get around the two blocks? It's kind of moving as we, as they go through. So that's what those discussions were about. And then Tom talked about the, the bridge railing a little bit. And what we concentrated on there was making sure that, that as far as the bridge goes, that we try as best we can to match the color and the bridge railing on the other bridges, pedestrian bridges in town, and we were able to do that. And then the bridge railing for downtown on the bridge, because they are changing that railing system out on that bridge too, it'll still be concrete, but they'll be railing on top, and tried to match, you know, look at, told them, we really want to try and match that to the black railing that's downtown now, you know, by the historic City Hall and stuff. And so I think what came out of it was, it was trying to, what we tried to accomplish was having the railing systems in town pretty much match in town without having a bunch of different colors and looks. So where there's pedestrian bridge, keep that color, and where there's the, the bridge along Highway 59, try and keep it black so it matches up with what's by Historic City Hall and stuff now. So that's what kind of came out of that. I met with a downtown commercial business owner regarding some plans for their building. That's the old Bell Bank building. Attended the quarterly safety committee meeting. I was a part of the Otter Tail County Complete Streets Polishing Workshop. They asked some of the cities that had been through that complete streets, planning thing that we did several summers ago, asked if I'd be a part of that, so I did do that. I had obviously several conversations with CETA in preparations for tonight's meeting and having Mr. Gassner come up. I held 2023 budget, utility budget and rate meetings with Clerk Hearthorne and also Councilman Foster and the mayor. And we're, we're looking at the budgets and trying to get the budgets done so I can possibly present that to the council at the first meeting in November. And then I had various meetings with Houston Engineering Superintendent Brian Olson and Min dot to look at the, and discuss the dam plans and how they need to correlate with the 2024 project specifically related to the storm drain. Because we're upsizing all the storm drain, or Min dot is, and because they're upsizing pipes to accommodate future rains and everything, on 108 East, they're putting in 42-inch pipes, but we've got 27-inch pipes coming off of the dam in our outlet down the river. So, you know, we have to figure out how we're going to upsize that. And so with that upsizing of the pipe also comes the upsizing of a manhole. And through those discussions, we've, we've got a plan and how we're going to do it and it's going to, most of the, there is going to be some cost to the city in doing this because it's our pipe going to the outflow down to the river. And it's our manhole actually and our pipe that's coming from the street too, but Min dot's picking up the tabs on upsizing that pipe and paying for the manhole, which is a good thing. I attended an annual loss control work, visit from the League of Minnesota Cities that we have every year, where we sit down and just talk about the city's insurance losses, you know, kind of go over those, any, any type of work comp, injuries, that type of thing. And that we do every year. Brian Olson usually sits in on those too because a lot of times it involves, you know, the way that those guys operate from a safety standpoint, PP and E, you know, all that type of stuff. Then I also met with Brian Olson and Bob Schleeman. Bob is really good as a city engineer from time to time. He likes to come in and we set and we go through all the projects that he's working on, including the stuff we just laid on him at the last meeting with the letter of intent for them to grants and stuff. And we just go through and make sure everybody understands where we're at and what page we're on. And this is, you know, probably takes us an hour, hour and a half because we have a lot of projects right now. So it's really a good update for me to see where things are at and what still needs to be done. And then with the mayor, I attended the Otter Tail Lakes Country Association's fourth quarter community collaborative meeting. That's my report.
Any questions for Don?
Yeah, do you have any vacation left? Because we don't have time for that.
Yeah, lots of vacation and good, good thing you brought that up.
Yeah.
Well, not lots, but I'm, I'm getting, I'm, I'm trying to work it to where I'll have enough vacation basically, so my last day of work will be December 23rd, which is a Friday. The following week, like most people, take Christmas week off, I'm going to do the same thing and that's where I'll burn up the rest of it. And so the city, it's planned that the city won't be paying me out any vacation. That's the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Don? Okay, thanks, Don. Item number, while you're on, Mayor, you brought a few items the last couple of weeks. 13th of October, 2024 Complete Streets Project here at City Hall with Superintendent Olson, Administrator Soga. Also had a call from Tracy Albock of Nutrition Services regarding the letter that was included in our packet this evening regarding meals on wheels being in the building where there's a private business. Partaken in a Safe Roots to School survey on October 18th, that was from 6:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. regarding counting kids, how they go to school, either by foot traffic, bicycle, scooter, in a vehicle, and that's part of the Safe Roots to School grant. Who got that, the city or the school?
The school, the school.
It's not the city, it's the school. Met with School Superintendent Korf and Commissioner Elaine Johnson at High School regarding a proposed future building for a warming house, for a skating rink concession stand, and also trailhead location. There'll be future meetings in that. And that is, we've had a couple of meetings and there, as far as cost, there hasn't been any cost out defined at this time. There's been some suggestions, but stay tuned and we'll, we'll tell you more about that in the future. Met with Councilman Foster, Administrator Soga for a preliminary water and sewer budget proposal, which will be coming to the, we're having another meeting this week.
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday this week, and we'll be presenting that to the council at the following council meeting. Met with Administrator Soga and Superintendent Olson regarding the future Rapids Bridge signage and logo, which Don talked about this evening. I met with members of Head Start and Mojave regarding the Child Care Center below River Front on Main. It's not being staffed now. They can't, they had a manager that went on to another job and they can't find anyone to staff it at this point. So there's, there are kids being brought there on a daily basis, which is very much needed. Met with Administrator Soga to review the agenda for this evening's meeting and I met with, like I said before, I met with students from the, from high school, concerns about them, where they can meet after hours and get together with their friends under supervision. I attended a meeting with Lakes Country Cooperative with Administrator Soga here on Monday. And then I did talk to several members of the community regarding the future of the senior citizens building. Any questions?
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, there was one other thing I wanted to mention.
Yeah.
Harold Hold, stick to his son on me, Connor. And I wanted to bring this up because Connor works for Tenemic, who was the, the company involved in the coatings for a water tower. I had about a half an hour more conversation with Connor about Pelican Pete. Because as you all know, when Pelican Pete gets moved in a month or so, we've got to do something to restore him before he goes back. And I believe that Connor could be very, very useful and valuable to talking with us. I asked him to potentially think about coming and talking to the city council about what we can do with Pelican Pete, because Tenemic is all about coatings with the water tower and he has some great ideas for Pelican Pete too, so.
Superb. Yeah, thank you. Seeing no other business on the agenda, is there a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's aye, meeting adjourned, thank you. Thank you.
I'm not even hungry.